This conference will now be recorded.
Do you want to chair remotely, sir?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess, is there anyone there in?
Um.
In person?
Scott and I are here. Sophia's here and Kay Grisal is here. And Melissa and we got Don remotely.
All right, I guess, yeah, I can kind of move through the topics, but if you see anyone there wanting to speak, just let me know.
Definitely.
So we're calling to order at 12:01 PM on January 4th. I'm Justin Maycock, present remotely.
Susan Cooper, present in person.
And what's left for Scott, sitting here.
So the first item on the agenda is meeting with the HR Director, Sophia. Just a regular monthly meeting, but also specifically to talk about the employee handbook. You want to give us any general updates, Sophia?
Um, I had a meeting with a bunch of the department heads about two weeks ago now to discuss performance evaluations and how we're going to be starting them on an annual basis. That seemed to be successful so far. So we are on that timeframe for having them completed by February. I will also be starting to formulate some training regimes regarding certain topics that are useful for this town in particular. Along with some file auditing and me and Melissa are going to come up with a new scheduled project for me as well.
Because, you know, it's that copious amount of time.
Right, I know, and some other behind the scenes things that are happening, but, but yes. Never a dull moment, for sure.
Any, any, what can you tell us about the training topics? Just clues.
What did we say? I think we want to do a few on interpersonal relations, relations, as well as maybe some ethics, things like that in regards to that. How to promote professionalism in the workplace. Things along that line, but I think we're on like a broad scope right now. So another good platform I was saying we could use as well is the department head meetings, which we will be having every other month. And for them to kind of bring us options or topics that they have interest in and I can develop things along the way, that way, and then we can kind of disperse it through the department that way, if that works also, if that's an idea. So I'm open, I would say, but as things arise, I think I'll promote other topics as well.
Cool. You have anything to add, Justin?
He's got us up here. No, I mean, do you want to get into, if that's, you want to get into the employee handbook?
Sure. Okay, so, like, next up is the employee handbook. Just going with the tab, showing my notes.
Do you want me to open anything up or have you sent me anything back?
I haven't, because some of these are like, I want to talk about them. So, let's see, my first one's on page four. These, some of them are comments to your notes, the, on the version you sent, right? Select boards appointing authority for all positions in the town of Monterey that do not answer to the elected board or individual. Elected officials and bodies are the appointing authorities for their respective areas of responsibility. And your comment was, we are still liable for elected officials and committees and should be having them sign onto these policies or there should be a policy manual created for them. I, I would agree. Would that just mean we just need to make sure that people who go on to boards and committees get a copy? Because there's a thing to sign at the end, does it mean just the chairs? Like, how would we want to carry that out?
It could be the same kind of thing for new hires in general. So it's just like a handbook that they're signing off on and it can be just like a code of conduct. This is why I said the both of the options, because obviously an employee handbook is quite more expensive than it would need to be for like elected officials or commissions. But it's nice to have like a code of conduct at least, just so, I mean, if somebody's just simply being rude, we can like, be like, listen. Like, if you're not going to listen to reason, at least listen to like the thing you signed off on.
So would we want to, would we want to have a like a board slash committee briefing handbook that had, say, the code of conduct and any other policies we thought were important for them to pay attention to that they could sign up on? So sort of like a, a briefer briefing book, as you were?
Yeah, um, I think it would be a good place to put even like the open meeting laws, per se. Like, just a general, like, guideline that could help them as well. So it's going to be probably a lot of laws that I'm not even aware of on a certain level, but that you may feel is, is useful too.
What do you think, Justin?
What are other towns that you're working for doing, Sophia? Do they have a separate?
I know at least, yeah, at least one has a separate commissions handbook and like boards, boards and commissions handbook.
Which one?
Sheffield.
Okay. So do we want to think about that and which policies would be smart to have in there? Do we want to look at Sheffield's? What are you thinking, Justin?
Yeah, I mean, I think, why don't we work on the employee handbook first? I wanted to figure out how we want to move forward with our revision. Should we bring them all back to Sophia? Should we discuss amongst ourselves at future meetings?
Why don't you conclude the majority of the conclusions with amongst yourselves and then just give me back a red, a redlined version?
All right, that's good.
Okay, um, let me just scan to see, I mean, would it be better to just meet with you separately to talk about the various questions I have instead of taking board time?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that works. The only other question I have is that, so you, you pulled the vacation time piece out entirely and the stuff I have from you seems like it's all about part-time people? Are, what are you thinking, were you thinking of significantly changing? Well, I guess we can't, because it's really a bylaw, right? The other vacation time policy is a bylaw.
It is.
So I was just leaving it open-ended because I didn't know we were going to change something in regards to that. That was drastic.
Remember you and Scott were going to go over it, because Justin's recusing himself.
From the part-time, but I was questioning about the full-time part. So if we wanted to make, I don't know that I do, but if we wanted to make any changes to the full-time vacation policy, we would have to do it at town meeting through a bylaw change, right?
Or you can rescind the current one so that there's not a bylaw about it and just leave it.
We'd still have to do that at town meeting.
Right.
Well, I don't see them as separate policy, but I see it's like one vacation policy in here, like addressing both.
Absolutely, it's just that there's, there was nothing in there in the, in the draft, not even the existing one. So I just was like, I was like, what does that mean? Is he suggesting we change it or not? Like, but that wasn't the case, so. At some point, it, it would be helpful for me to have a conversation with you about what you're thinking regarding vacation, potential vacation policies for part-time people. I, you know, I don't know what the standard is. I feel like we have different situations in different departments. Like, if, because transfer station, you need to have that service available. Often when a holiday falls on a transfer station day, we change the day the transfer station is open. So the person just is getting a moved shift, they're not actually missing their shift. But with the library, and I don't know who else this, like, vacation days end up affecting significantly. With the library, when it's closed, that person just flat out misses their shift. And I do feel like, especially like New Year's and Christmas always fall on the same day. So you're guaranteed who's ever shift lands on that day unless it's a day the library's normally closed, because, but they throw up in six days, right? They would miss two shifts automatically. And I sort of feel like, I don't like that. Like, I get it if you've only been with the town for two months or something, but I feel like if you've been with the town a while and the, the library is shut for a holiday and you just completely miss that shift, I feel like you should be compensated for your shift. You're not paid for a whole day, you're paid for the missed shift. That's my personal feeling, but I don't know enough about the field to know is that, would that be very unusual? Is it a responsible thing? Is it fiscal year responsible for the town? I don't know, that's what I wanted to talk about.
Or is it even a vacation thing, but rather a holiday thing?
Oh, I guess it's holiday, not vacation, yes, I agree. That's holiday, not vacation, but that was one that I wanted to address, the issue of holiday. What's your thoughts, Scott?
Ask the department head what their thoughts are on the policy and how, let them draft up a solution. That's my idea. I mean, if you just want to use the library as an example, I think I'd take this question directly to Mark, let him and his associates discuss it amongst them and come up with the way they would like to be treated. And then we can take it back here and vet it out and see what it causes us or costs.
Would cost us, yeah.
It may not be a cost at all, but it may make people feel a little better about working for the town and different levels of, of the work that needs to be done.
Are there other part-time workers besides the transfer station or library where this would even be applicable, potentially, please?
And that could really hook the, because right now we're requiring part-timers work holidays.
But.
The police department's got to be considered a separate entity.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Just the work that they do.
And because they're specifically being hired to fill that, so it's, they don't have regular shifts, right? They're being used when they're needed.
Right, and, but they're being required to work holidays because the full-timers get it off because they're full-time.
But don't we hire them knowing that for that purpose?
Specifically for.
Right, so I'm just, you ask what's, and if it's bringing it there and make people feel.
Right, right, what other, right. I mean, what hap-
Value, you know, like, you got the town quarter, you got the building inspector.
He just wouldn't work on a holiday and would take his hours another day, no?
Possibly, but if we're going to allow people to make up time and if it was an issue and we had the town quarter.
How, like, with the building department, his, I had the impression that.
Office hours?
But doesn't he, most of his hours end up being, like.
Inspections.
Inspections and stuff, which happens whenever he schedules them anyway. So, I don't know that it would have happened.
But I, but if I was the building inspector, I might say, well, why am I not getting paid a holiday to be off?
There, there needs to be continuity.
You know, like, everybody else gets it paid off, even if they're working another day, but I don't.
I mean, that becomes holiday pay.
Well, except that, I was saying that with, like, with the transfer station, if we just had it, a holiday fell on a Sunday, they didn't get paid for Sunday because they worked Monday. So they still had their shift, it just got moved to another day.
So what happens when it falls on a Saturday and they're already scheduled to work Sunday?
What does happen, no one? If the, when the holiday, so they.
They lose money.
We don't actually open another day?
They don't lose, well, because, because the Saturday is closed, but they're going to open Sunday and we just lose a day of use.
Right, but they don't get paid for working that day. I, I understood that we would have looped the open hours.
If it's, so if it's Su- Sunday, yes, or Wednesday, we would move it to Thursday, but if it's open the next day, you know.
We don't, we just can't.
Gotcha.
And it's been set up, as long as I can recall. Yeah, so, so changing one.
I didn't realize that, so I would have included that as well.
Sets up a chain of possibly changing everything. It's worked up to now, right?
It works, but there are people who are, like, who, I know, because the head of library has spoken to me about it, that it is an issue for him, that he would like to see us treated differently and he realizes that he himself is in an odd situation, but I, I agree with him. I didn't realize that they were losing shifts. Because, that they could be, but I, I haven't noticed that happening or I, because I think that would count too. I think for me, the difference is a person who has a set shift that isn't flexible is different than someone who has hours that are kind of flexible to begin with, because, I mean.
Well, why, not to nitpick the library, but why would the library, knowing that there's a holiday coming, decide to be open on a holiday?
They, they don't.
So then nobody is really missing anything.
But for a part-time person, it's still missing shifts in the overall scheme.
Like, if you work your four-hour shift, you get paid X dollars. If your shift falls on a holiday, you don't work, but you also don't get that money. But it isn't because, yeah, but it isn't because you chose not to work. You, you're, you're not working because the library isn't open.
Well, we also have to have some type of understanding that there are dates during the year that your normal shift may fall on a holiday and when that happens, enjoy the holiday.
Which is the current situation, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just asking if, if we have a, you know, if we have a part-time worker who's worked in the library as a good worker for five years and they're using that income because of the random nature of a holiday, I, I just, I'm just raising the question as to whether that, like, is this a benefit we can offer for something where the flex, the shift isn't flexible? For lack of a better way to phrase it. Does anybody else do this or is it just pretty much part-timers don't get holiday pay?
No, I'm pretty sure the Great Barrier most likely pays out for their people, even if they're hourly. Most places do. And it incentivizes being a part-time worker here too, because you're not getting any of the other benefits associated with, like, actual insurance and things, so. I think if it really is a point of contention, you need to just cost it out and see if the numbers are feasible.
I mean, I, for me, I'd like to do that and I'd also like to see how we think it would impact other departments.
So I'll put something together, can we schedule a meeting? Because I know Justin's going to recuse himself from that, like, for the three of us, me and him, like.
Sure, that, we'd have to have a posted meeting, but I don't see, I'm only nine ladders of it, it's sound. But sure, I don't see why not. Does that work for you?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll put something together.
A normal, a normal meeting day, maybe at like 5:30.
To come before, that works.
Six or 11:30 to noon, or something like that, so that I'm not in the middle of Richmond getting a phone call trying to remind me somewhere else.
Yes. It might be helpful to also maybe have if, if GB is doing that, to see what their policy looks like. But it still helps to know how it would affect us because of how our departments work.
You know, one, one thing coming from memory is that we always strove to be equal with other towns in pay, fairness and incentives. So in keeping with that tradition, I think that we should have definitely investigated into it. And if you're going to do that legwork of trying to figure out who would be involved and what that would possibly cover, what is it, 14 holidays roughly?
Twelve.
Twelve. That it would have, that it would involve, right?
Okay, Sophia and I can go over the policies later. We'll check for something, but somebody got to.
Cool. So now, the same concept, but vacation. How does other towns handle that?
Prorated.
Prorated based on the number of hours versus a full-time?
Right.
You mean when they first start, if they start before like the mid-year or whatever?
No, I mean, do other towns pay part-time worker, allow paid vacation for part-timers?
Yeah, always on accrual system, usually, which makes sense.
Yeah.
You're not getting up your full balance, you're getting what you're working.
Which seems fair to me, and presently we pay none, right?
Right.
So I, I kind of like to see us do that, too.
So just invite me as to how that would operate.
So the new hire would come on and there might be a preliminary period, but I don't know.
What department would that be involved? Any, any part-time?
Any part-time person, yes, correct.
From any office?
Um, you could put, like, criteria on it though, so if they're not working more than like six months out of the year, they don't qualify for, if, I mean, if it's like a seasonal job.
Do we have any secrets?
Well, they're not going to really accrue anything anyway, isn't it? You just say, like, you're going to accrue, like.
Right, that's what I thought too.
Point five hours every week or something like that, up until you get your, like, full week at the end of the year, something like that.
I would try to strive to keep it as simple.
Right.
As possible. So that it's easy to understand, negotiate and deal with, rather than having somebody that, you haven't worked point oh six this and that, let's just kind of run it as a policy. With the accrual system, of course.
The, the full-time will get a day per, what? For sick time, it's one and a quarter per month. And for vacation time? It's one week at first, after the first year, oh, that, two weeks.
That's for full-time.
Right, I was asking full-time, because I wanted a benchmark against which to measure it.
Yeah, I mean, there is nothing for part-time people, right? And we're thinking about making something.
Correct.
Right, and so it would differ, so like a full-time person gets a week at the end of their first year, but a part-time person is going to get exactly what they've accumulated based on their hours or.
Right, so it's like two days or something.
Yeah.
But at least they don't have nothing.
Right.
Right.
Which is important, like, if they're resting sometime, at least they're getting something.
Other than, not all day, sure.
Um, so I think it would be great if we could have somebody can, like, look at, like, a, a mock-up, some comparisons of other towns and what it would end up costing us. Because I would like to see us offer that. So, that's my two cents.
Yeah, no, I should at least bring it to the table.
Okay. All right, what's next up? Oh, the only thing under you is draft employee handbook, so. We're good, on to the next thing. Thank you very much and.
Welcome. Just position the chair for it.
Feel better, Justin.
Thank you.
Now you have to slide around. Yeah, yeah, you bet you want to go on that side of the table.
This is a much better position on the table.
I know, I like it, and I, I like being, it's more, a lot easier to, easier to see this and see what people are. We like the new system. Okay, I'll take the stickers off. I was prepared to return and if you didn't like it. All right, special town meeting warrant?
Yeah. Melissa, did you get my, the copy for, after last night's meeting?
I did, but I didn't print it off for them.
I think the, the only major change is.
The order.
Well, actually, I guess all the changes have been since the last time we met, because it's been two weeks, but.
I had one, one question come up last night that we wanted, that the finance committee wanted clarified and I felt like correct, I wasn't 100% certain I remember correctly. In Article One, it was, it ended up as $35,000 for the fuel because how much could be used from elsewhere to compensate for what we think the initial overage will be? Or do we think that the only other?
Right, we're thinking the rest of it's going to come from, I mean, I've already charged the last two bills, the snow and ice, storms, so.
And so, like, I think Frank said he estimated 68 more? And so we're thinking the other 33 would come from snow and ice? Okay.
So we may be 68,000 or under.
That's what Frank is assuming.
It was.
No, I thought, I'm pretty sure Frank meant the total for the year is going to be 68,000. I'm almost certain about that.
As, Justin, do you mean for the upcoming budget that they would then request 68?
For next year.
No, I think, I think he meant, his prediction was this year we will spend $68,000 on fuel.
Right, so for fiscal year '24, we would ask for 68,000.
So I'm, I'm looking at his, the fuel cost projection that he sent. So far year-to-date, $24,999, projections another 34 at 596 a gallon with the estimated cost for the year at 59,110.67. I was wondering where his 68 come from, because I didn't remember that number. So this sounds like it would pretty much cover it with the snow and ice.
Okay. If not, I mean, if it doesn't take us to May, we can add it as an article on, on the annual town meeting warrant as well.
Right.
We should anticipate that. And then just strike it if needed, like, to anticipate that we're going to have that as an article, aren't they?
Well, and who knows what will happen to fuel costs, so we'll have a better idea by then anyway.
They're, they're going to dip a little bit, but then they're going to go back up somewhere. Okay.
So, are we all, I mean, are we all working off the same warrant here? Because I think.
Yes.
We can approve, I mean, I guess if anyone has any questions, I think we've talked about most of the stuff before. The one change we made last night was really the ordering of the articles, putting the higher, or the most expensive articles up first, while just ranking them by price. And then, um, asking for the Concom agent wages to come out of the health insurance account.
She's printing it back off for us. Was that incom, was that comprehensive? Melissa went to print it out for us, so we have the most up-to-date version.
And this is in chronological order as of last night?
More, not, what do you mean in chronological, it's more like.
As far as the way they wanted to change.
Yeah, we just moved the Article E to Article Three, so that they're in amount order.
So that's what I meant.
Exactly.
Just regardless of putting in your, it's kind of a system.
Right. Did you catch that?
Just disregard your.
The disregard that she put in our vote, she's just anticipating.
Yes.
Okay, so. None of the other amounts changed, right, Justin? Except, where did the 20, 2930 went to the bottom?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so if we go through, Article One is the $35,000 from the highway capital account to the fuel account. Article Two is $20,000 from fire department compensation and $15,000 from free cash to the fire department.
Want to vote as you go? Do we want to vote as you go, Justin?
We can do, we can do, unless anyone's expecting to be opposed. If you have any questions or you're opposed to any of the articles, just let me know. And then other than that, we can just vote in as a lumps, as a group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Article Three, transfer the sum of $30,000 from free cash to the litigation fees and expenses account. That's for the Hume lawsuit. Article Four, transfer the sum of $5,409 from the unemployment insurance account to the building inspector wages account. That's because Don has more hours since he's been using the time clock. Article Five, transfer the sum of $5,250 or any other sum from the health insurance account to a new conservation commission agent wages account. That is because the revolving fund is not keeping up with paying the agent, but also because the conservation commission is asking to raise the agent from $25 an hour to $35 an hour. Which we have to discuss later in the meeting.
And is it also because we technically shouldn't be paying the conservation agent out of that revolving fund for non NOI work?
Yes, certain things should not be charged.
Yeah, I don't under, I know that, it was last November, we had split, not this November of 2021, we had split up into a few different revolving accounts, which would make it definitely seem like each revolving account should only cover its own, you know, like the wetlands revolving account and the Shining Mountains revolving account. It certainly make it seem like it should only cover its own applications and fees.
It wouldn't, because unless the fees go up dramatically, it has to pay for advertising as well.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's, and that was something that Eileen asked at the meeting last night, how high would fees have to go to cover? And it doesn't seem like any other town really does that. It doesn't seem like any other town really does that because. Most towns appropriate, but we'll kind of get to that, uh, at the concert meet, does anyone have? Questions on this article?
No. Gee? Okay, we're good, next one.
Um, Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifteen hundred or any other sum from the town clerk expenses account to the election account. Extra election this year. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote transfer the sum of one thousand two hundred and twenty four or any other sum from the unemployment insurance account to the assessors expenses account. That account was under budgeted this year. Article Eight, I'm going to recuse myself on, so actually Susan and Scott, you can deal with that now and.
To transfer the sum of four hundred or any other sum from the unemployment insurance account to the library wages account or take any, it's it's basically to account for overages as a result of time clock. I I don't have a problem with it. Um, you're up next, you want me to do the last ones?
I can do the last one. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote transfer the sum of twenty nine dollars and thirty cents or any other sum from the unemployment insurance account to pay a bill of a prior year. There is a question, Melissa, I remember you told me, but I forgot, what is that bill? There was a question, a question last night.
Yeah, it was, um. Deferred comp or something, there was a something on payroll side that needed to be corrected.
And then Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to rescind the remaining unissued amount from the May sixth twenty seventeen annual town meeting warrant, Article Five, in the amount of three hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and five dollars for the unused portion of the authorization. That was not borrowed by the treasurer for the library renovation. And then. There's the time, this part of the time meeting is being called for Saturday, January twenty first at one thirty. At the fire station, at the firehouse.
Does it actually, it doesn't have the time on here, does it?
Yeah, I'm looking at the first paragraph.
Oh, right, okay, one thirty, there we go.
Can I just ask one question regarding Article Four?
Yeah.
Five thousand four hundred and nine from the unemployment insurance account.
Yes.
How does that account, um, allow itself to be scavenged from?
It's just a regular operating expense on our, it's not set up, set up as a special fund. So when she pays, when the payroll pays unemployment, it just comes out of a regular operating expense.
But if you're asking why there's extra, it's.
We had, she had budgeted extra because of during COVID, there was a lot of fraudulent unemployment insurance claims. And she was afraid that we were going to get hit by them and we would have had to pay and then dispute it after, so, but we haven't done.
So even with these requested deductions from that fund. Will there still be overages that from that account that will go back into free cash at the end of the year?
A little bit, yeah, we the budgeted fifteen thousand dollars, and I think we figured we could spend about seventy five of it.
All right, and the, and not to harp on the building inspector or anybody else, but, um, it is because of.
He's been working about an average of three hours more a week.
Due to?
Well, he's always been doing it, but now that he's actually tracking his time in the payroll's.
Because we've asked them to go to time clock rather than.
So now we're actually seeing what he's.
Okay, all right, and that's the same thing on Article Seven.
No, seven is they under budgeted for expenses. Article Eight.
Of expenses.
Their supplies. You meant the library, though.
Well, at first, but no, number seven.
Yeah, seven is, yeah.
Is just to the assessors of expense account. What was under budgeted?
Like office supplies and stuff.
And they didn't realize they were going to need that, or they didn't realize they were going to need the amount that they needed?
Yeah, I think they thought that there was going to be a reduction to some of their costs and then they were surprised with getting a bill. For services that they weren't anticipating, so.
Disputable? Okay, all right. Well, I would move that we approve the warrant as written and read today for the special town meeting on January twenty first. Twenty twenty three.
Second.
Can I, can I ask you to do one thing first, please, Scott, sorry to interrupt, but. Um, could you and Susan please vote on Article Eight first because I can't? And then we can go on the whole thing.
Okay, okay, I would move that due to the recusation of our esteemed colleague, Article Eight. See if the town will vote to transfer the sum of four hundred or any other sum from the unemployment insurance account to the library wages or take any other action relative thereto. I so move that we accept that article as written.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Article Eight approves two to zero with Justin recused. Okay, so my motion stands minus Article Eight to accept the warrant as written, Articles One to Seven.
Second is amended.
Nine and ten as written and amended.
Second as amended.
Is there any discussion among that? Any discussion on that, Justin, you had any input?
Nope, I agree, I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, so it's unanimous. And the motion moves and passes.
Another one bites the dust.
So I will. I will come down and sign, I'll come down and sign after the meeting, um. Can we also please, or Melissa, can you please? Like, uh, send out emails saying for all those people who are signed up on the email or. Uh, do the banner advertisement or whatever you think will get people's attention? I just know that, um, I thought that we did enough last special time meeting, but. I got some complaints that people didn't know that there was a special time meeting, so.
Okay.
I did vote, I will mail it out too, right, so anyway.
Yep.
And the moderate community group could also do a email blast.
And I know it was in, uh, I believe there was an article in the.
Monterey.
Monterey News, but he, we could probably ask him if he would be willing to do something a little, you know, re reblip closer to meeting. I don't know.
Well, he has an email as.
Yeah, like a week before, he could just say reminder or whatever. Yeah.
Okay, is that all set for this special time meeting? The capital planning policies, policy and procedure.
Um, give me one second to finish signing this, but I'll talk at the same time. I endeavored in that draft to try to, um. Merge the the both documents, the one you had made and the one the finance committee and the TA worked on, um, to try to. I did try to find a middle ground to make sure that nobody got. Felt like their work hadn't been adequately. Incorporated, um, I don't know how you feel about it, but that's what I attempted to do, whether I succeeded or not, remains to be seen. Oh, I thought he was going to.
Yeah, I have.
Right? He did go back, but you're not here, hang on, she's she's sending it now. Oh, before I forget, Justin, what's the, we talked about the clicker training for the town meeting. What's the status of that?
So the. Person who ran it in New Marlboro is willing to meet at some point, I just haven't gotten back to him. He's willing to meet at some point and go over it with us. Um, and the moderator in New Marlboro also said that Merity has a good training online. I just haven't gotten back to him about a time and date for training.
Okay. But our goal is still to try to use it, right?
Yeah, I think we should have enough time, we have. Sixteen, seventeen days, right? He said it's not, he's, they all said it's not complicated. All right, capital policy. Draft. It looks good. To me at first. Glance.
And if you want to take the week to to look at it and go over it and make sure you're cool with it or make suggestions, I'm totally fine with that.
Well, the only, the only. Thing that I wonder is if we should have one list of, um. Criteria or factors to be considered, but I'd have to take a look. To see if they could be mashed into one list or having two lists makes more sense, you know what I'm talking about?
Um, so the the like the the one that appears under procedures and then the. Other list under it, evaluation and priority?
Yeah.
Because it first did have the two different lists, so I just stayed with that?
Yeah.
I think that the one list is things that we, information we need to make a decision. And the other is a list of the factors we'll use in making the decision based on that information. So I don't actually think they're the same content.
All right, well, we have to bring this with the to the finance committee as well, so why don't? I mean, I I think it, I think it's all the, everything seems good as far as what the what the factors are to me.
Do you agree we should include, um, chairs of boards and commission chairs in the. Mention in the budgeting process because we do ask the boards and committees to submit a budget, right?
Yeah.
That's under procedures, first paragraph and second paragraph?
Yeah.
Um, another question I had was, I'm not sure about this one, in that first section about procedures. It says, um, proposals to revise the capital plan shall be submitted as either a capital improvement worksheet or a capital project rating sheet. The other version had it as and, and I honestly don't know which it should be, so it was a question. Should it be both or should it be or?
I'd say or because nobody did it anyway.
If it's, if it's going to be two worksheets, then it'll always need to be submitted simultaneous, so we should just make it one worksheet.
Yeah.
Right, I thought that there was a difference.
One was for machinery and the other one was for just capital expenses, like a copier or something. But I can tell you that nobody filled it out except for the police department.
Be either form?
Either form. I'm not sure that it's a real big deal, I think people, everybody are so used to doing it one way and justifying it in their way, and I think if it works, it works, you know, there wasn't.
Yeah, let's not fix it if it isn't broken.
Okay, yeah. I would almost get rid of them altogether.
Do you want to get rid of it?
I would get rid of one of them.
Then let's, if nobody's using it and the process is working okay, we could get rid of it. That doesn't mean we can't ask them to make sure they answer all those questions, though.
Right. As long as they justify it, you know, with with everything we have here.
The worksheet rather than the rating sheet would be more.
Definitely.
So I would strike the project's rating sheet part of it and just keep it as the improvement worksheet.
Capital improvement worksheet, yeah.
So do we want to institute a worksheet? Because I did see, uh. The police chief filled one out for the vehicle. For the cruiser request, but Melissa, you're saying no one else filled them out?
Correct.
Well, so to get capital.
Highway fire.
Highway fires.
I mean, you could get from other people like, you know, the library or me if we were buying a copier or something like that or.
Aren't those on our plan?
My copier is.
Yeah, Tom Hall always said.
Capital like roofing, if they needed to get the roof done or we need to get the roof done. So I mean, there would be projects and we over twenty grand, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, are you okay with my alternative in paragraph in, uh, right above policy, the last paragraph of policy?
The alternative capital purchases?
Um, yeah, so it because the original sentence read capital purchases and the related funding sources should be coordinated to fulfill the needs of the town while maintaining a steady and limited impact on required tax revenue. And I I wasn't really sure how a major capital expense could have a limited impact. So I tried to reword it to be more what I thought meant was meant by there. Should be coordinated to fulfill the needs of the town, including efforts to mitigate excessive or variable impacts on required tax revenue?
Yeah.
I I don't know if that's better or not, but that was my effort.
Well, I think you also omitted the word steady, which kind of balances out the steady limited.
Right.
So that it's.
I changed it to, you know, to remove variable. That was my effort, thoughts, Justin?
Well, we don't. Want the tax rate, I mean, as as little as possible, we don't want the tax rate to fluctuate every time that we. Buy a truck or something like that, we'd rather. Spread it out over in that, putting money away in stabilization or through taking out a loan or something, right? Like it would be not good if it was a volatile tax rate. But you're right, to some degree, I mean, if we're going to buy something expensive, it's going to come, it's going to cost the town in one way or another.
So I thought mitigate excessive or variable impacts kind of covered that territory, but you're welcome to alter the wording if you think you got a better way.
Yeah, no, that seems, I mean, I I I think it's all getting the same thing, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Maybe we'll come back to this one last time next week and then we'll have to propose it to the finance committee because we've been trying to. Do all the financial policies, but it was jointly approval.
Absolutely. Okay.
All right. If we're all set there. Conservation Commission reappointment, Tim Lovett, I think this is for six months.
Yep. Yay, he didn't try to do it for three.
I can make the motion, uh, move, I'll move to appoint Tim Lovett to the Conservation Commission for the period of six months.
Second.
Is there any more discussion on that?
Thank you, Tim, for being willing to continue to volunteer.
Call and vote, uh, Justin, yes?
Yes. Yeah, Scott, yeah. Scotty.
You know that.
Thank you, Tim. Um, the next. Item is the Community Center Engineering quote. Which is for thirty-five thousand, six hundred for foresight and EDM. Lori Shaw, who chairs the Community Center Committee. Asked if. Asked if the Community Center Committee could review the bid and, and make a recommendation to the select board. So they're meeting on January twelfth. So. We could pick this back up on January eighteenth, I don't know. I wouldn't have put this on the agenda had I, had I realized. But. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, totally, I, I'm just going to put out there that I hate that we burned through thirty-five grand. And not even get any building for it, I really hate that, and I, I really feel like. The process is a waste of money. I, I know we need plans for it, but it just bothers me that it's such a big chunk of money and the only thing we get for that is a plan, we don't get a building.
No.
Well, no, they're also going to do the procurement of it, which I think in this particular instance, because it. Has ruffled some feathers and, and whatnot, is a very.
Having outside.
Yes, so that Jim or I are not involved in saying, well, you have to do this because so and so said. And I mean, like, we ran into the issue with the plumbing inspector who should have just said, wait for plans to begin with, but he was given. Two different questions to, to give the answer two different ways. So I think in this particular case and possibly the playground as well, um, it might be helpful to have an outside. Party handling.
Oh, yeah, and, and. It, it's ultimately up to the, to the board, I think, how to proceed, but, um, Lori. Uh, thought that the, the Community Center Committee might have. You know, a recommendation, I, like, I think that kind of is different than what was expected. Um, so they may feel, I don't know, because she starts to meet with them, but they may feel differently about how to proceed with the project than. You know, when they initially made the proposal, I don't know. But she just was hoping that they can make a recommendation.
Okay. Well, like I always thought, let the people that are involved. Make their intent known.
Yeah.
Let them come up with it.
Okay.
Okay, and a police, police donation?
Yeah, they received a five hundred dollar donation from Blackwell's Pool and Patio. You guys just have to officially accept it before we can, before they can use it.
It's okay by me.
Yeah, is there a motion for that? We need to make a motion, okay?
Uh, motion to accept the donation to the Monterey Police Department from Blackwell's Pool and Patio in the amount of five hundred dollars.
I second the motion.
Yes? Any, uh, any discussion?
None.
Okay, then let's call a vote, I vote yes.
Yeah, all vote, yes, Justin. And that was two yeses there, so unanimous yes vote. Right?
It was three, Scott did yes to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh. Transfer station resignation.
Just making you aware that Bruce resigned for personal reasons. Was it two weeks ago now? So we do have an ad out and I only had one person come in to fill an application out, just today, actually. But we are.
Is that position also available for the senior tax writer?
It is.
It is. What's the age for senior?
The issue with that is the seniors can only earn up to fifteen hundred dollars a year, so. It would limit the amount of hours, they wouldn't be able to do the full eighteen hours, because. Just see what that comes up to.
Okay. And that's it, how much an hour, fifteen?
Well, the senior workup is paid at fifteen, yes.
The.
That's the new minimum wage as of today, right, or as of?
Yes, I think that is.
As of January first.
Does that push that wage up anymore, or?
The new minimum wage is fifteen.
I think it's fifteen as of.
Yeah.
That's what I just looked up anyway.
Well anyhow, uh, we all understand that he resigned, so.
Yes, and he left or is leaving the state, so it, it wasn't anything to do with us.
No, no.
Yeah.
Just wanted that clear.
Just wanted that clear, it was not a malfunction on the part of the town, so it really was personal reasons. Um, okay.
So the next item is the Conservation Commission. Wrote to us, we had, they had let us know. Earlier this year that they were running out of money to pay the agent. And they're requesting. A raise. Uh, of the agent from twenty-five dollars per hour to thirty-five dollars per hour. Um, and. They also. Um, wants, they want to increase the fees for the. Applications, I think that they are the ones with the authority to change the fees, though I could be mistaken.
Right. They can set their own fees, I think you guys just need to vote on, they want to pay her starting in January, the thirty-five dollars.
Um. So we should just remind them that they set the fees. As far as the raise.
I think we had asked them to consider raising the fees, so I think that, you know, it's great to remind them, but they may have been telling us that they had considered, and this is what they were considering. Even if they knew they had to do it, I just thought, yeah, I mean, we did ask them.
Well, they said here that they wanted to, we will also need to increase the fees associated with those two. Uh, so they're not thinking that the fees are going to, it seems like they're asking us almost to raise the fees. Uh.
Uh.
So.
Well, we, we can clarify who's doing it.
Right.
Yeah. It's just they have the authority. Um. I. I wonder if we should ask the finance committee, I mean, when we met with the finance committee last night. They. You know, obviously, we're looking out for the. They wanted to make sure that kind of changes are. Premeditated and making it with a concern to the whole, to the whole picture. And I understand the Conservation Commission, you know, wants to pay their agent appropriately and at a competitive rate. But I wonder if this isn't more of a budget question that shouldn't be dealt with. You know, with the budget in its entirety, because there are other departments that are also asking for. Um. Raises, I just met with the police who were asking for a raise for the full-time officers. Um. So. I wonder if. We shouldn't. Uh, deal with this raise increase as part of the whole budget process. With the finance committee? But that's just my, my thought.
Well, it affects the warrant. So I would say that they should be involved in it. Think you're correct.
And the special town meeting warrant, we did ask for some money for the new Conservation Commission agent wages account, but we didn't. Change the amount being spent, we just changed its source. Um. So I don't think, you know, I don't think the Concom is going, I mean, I think they're looking out for their agent. Which certainly is a valuable part of their work at this point. Um. But I think that we should really deal with it like we're dealing with all the other. So.
So how, how would that look in terms of, like, if we would not make a decision today, we would bring it up in the budget discussions with the finance committee?
The raise really wouldn't become effective. No, continue, sorry, for.
The item on the warrant sets up a new budget line and puts some money in there, so in the interim, there is money to pay the agent who would continue to be paid at twenty-five dollars an hour until that was officially changed?
Yeah, so like, the police department requested, just as an example, their full-time officers are currently getting paid twenty-five an hour. And the police chief requested twenty-eight. Um, so. If we approve that as part of the budget process. Um, with the select board and the finance committee, and then it goes on the town meeting warrant, then it would become effective not until July one. So it is, it is delayed, but it is also the way that we just typically have dealt with raises in my understanding of things.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, you did raise the part timers to twenty-five dollars effective January first. Police, pardon me. Just two weeks ago. Yep. And the amount that's on the warrant is actually at the thirty-five dollar an hour rate. But all we're doing is putting money into the account, right? Now we're talking about how it would be spent. But the initial figure I gave you was for twenty-five dollars an hour.
Is the way it's spent our purview? Or is getting them funded our purview?
The way it's.
Do we have a right to set her wages, is what I think you're asking? Is it actually us that sets her wage or them?
I think they recommend it because it's actually them who appoint her.
Yeah.
So.
I think we approve the warrant item for the request. And they have to deal with the way that they. Spend that funding.
I mean, I can say in the time she's been here and since we've had this position, it's always been twenty-five dollars an hour, so it, it's, it's time to give her a raise.
And I'll just say the amazing work that this person has done for the town.
And she also doesn't put in for mileage, you know, for all those site visits and stuff that she does, so I, you know, I think it's fair.
Well, I, um.
And it's not.
So the two are kind of separate, this gets, let's just say hypothetically, it gets approved on the twenty-first. The Concom now has the money to pay the agent what they feel is just. The warrant comes out, we formulate that with the finance committee. With the understanding that they're going to be asking for this line item or an additional. Amount to the line item that either flies or fails the town meeting, but it, no matter what, they are at least funded now.
Right, so I, I think you could approve thirty-five dollars an hour right now, because they're still paying for any time she does between now and the twenty-first from the revolving, it's not completely empty, so she, they could pay from there. Then they would start paying thirty-five from there if that's approved at the twenty-first, and then we would just put in a full year for fiscal year twenty-four budget at thirty-five. I mean, no different than what we're doing with the part-time police officers.
Yeah.
It does strike me that in the end, if they set the rate, whether we formally approve it or not is kind of immaterial. The only control we would have is whether we put the money in the budget or not.
Correct.
Am I wrong there, Justin?
Uh, that makes sense, I mean, I guess it's a question for town council. Uh, who sets the rate for the Concom agents, is the Concom or the select board? Uh, we can all agree that the select board and the finance committee will put a figure in the warrant for next year, so. Kind of indirectly setting the rate in that way. Um, it can also be something that the special town meeting can kind of discuss and vote on. But would it make sense, I could ask town council whether the select board sets the. Uh, wage rate for the Concom agent or the Concom does that?
It would be good to know legally who has that authority. It shouldn't be a hard, I mean, I, she probably knows. I would hope.
All right, so what if, how, what if we do this to move forward, I'll ask Donna. If it's the select board or the Concom who sets the wage rate for the agent. And then. It can be. I mean, and then if it's not our jurisdiction, it's not our. We'll just tell the Concom that it's up to them, and then, I mean, it will be part of the budget discussion for the coming year. Um. If it's the select board's purview, then we can have that discussion, but if it's not, then we don't need to waste our breath.
Right, do, do we want to write a formal note to them, signed by all of us, saying, we're glad you addressed the issue of. Fees, um, it's under your purview, so you can proceed with that as you wish, or do we just want to let Melissa write her a quick, write them a quick note, or how do you want to proceed?
Well, let, let me find out from Donna, who sets the rate for the agent. And then, once we can kind of respond fully to their letter. Maybe next week or the following week, we can. Write them a complete answering all of their, you know, answer both the fees and the wage rate of the agent.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Yes, it does.
Okay. So. That's how we'll proceed. Um, the next item of the Board of Registars vacancy update, so. The. Current status, I checked with the interim, I checked with Marie, the town clerk, the interim town clerk. And did a little bit of research and I finally heard back from the Republican. Caucus chair. I don't, do you guys have copies of those letters?
Yes.
Yeah.
So. What you'll notice about, um, Barbara Swan's letter is that actually all four of those. Voters are unenrolled, they're not Democrats. Um, we do, as far as I can understand it, we do have one currently appointed registrar who is a Democrat, which is Steve Pollan. Whose appointment expires on January twenty-ninth.
But this.
Yeah. Of this year, so just in a few weeks, so if he's willing to be reappointed, now we need to find one Republican. And it really would make some sense to make one unenrolled voter. Uh, because we wouldn't want, let's say we appoint two Democrats and then we find a permanent town clerk who's also a Democrat. It, that doesn't seem really right, the whole idea seems to be a balance between the parties. So. It might be hard to find people who are willing to do it, but. I could just try and get in touch with the Republicans and the unenrolled that were provided and see if any of them are willing to serve. And then if they are, we could appoint them in the next couple of weeks, along with reappointing Steve if he's willing to do it again.
What were the rules governing people who could serve, if you have an elected position you can, but if you have an appointed position you can, is that how it went?
Um, yeah.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. My battery's gone, so I gotta grab a charger. Um. But because we're a small town. We have an exemption. Um, where we can have registrars who are appointed to a position.
Okay.
But they absolutely cannot be elected, that's a hard and fast rule.
So it's only Ca- Catherine Roberts is appointed, but it's allowable, so, and the other people on the unenrolled, I don't recognize any of their names, I don't think they're elected to anything. Nor are.
No, they're all not elected, I made that very clear, the chairs. There are a couple that are appointed to different positions in town, but frankly, I mean, I'm. I will be happily surprised if I can find one Republican and one unenrolled by calling these lists of people that are willing to do it, but hopefully. They can. Um, but I guess that's what I'll do if, if that works for. You, Scott and Susan. But I guess that's what I'll do if, if that works for you, Scott and Susan. I will get in touch with these people and see if anyone's willing to do it.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
So the three names for the Republican Party that are listed here, without mentioning names, they have not already been asked if they would serve, and that's why their names are, are in front of us? Do we...
Uh, yeah, I don't think, I don't think any of these were asked if they could do it. These are just el- people who are eligible to serve, not necessarily people who are willing to serve.
So there was only three, three Republicans in the entire town that were eligible?
No, there's technically, well, technically, I think there's 30-something Republicans in the whole town, and then out of those, a certain number elected. And...
Well, that's what I meant. After, after vetting of being elected, et cetera, only three names show up. Okay.
Well, who are 30 and 27 elected?
Okay. Well...
No, 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 that's not the point. The, I could share with you the letter that I sent to the, actually, I think you may have seen it.
You don't have to. I was just curious as to if they sent us a list of three people.
The way that it works, the way that it works is just the select board asks the, the Republican caucus and the Democratic caucus in our case. If you have different political parties in your town, you'd ask each of them, but you just ask of them for a slate of pe- of eligible candidates from their party. Doesn't need to be every eligible candidate.
You have to wait till one person stops.
I thought I did. Okay. All right, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so these are just three of the...
Let us, let us proceed with your recommendation.
Yes, over and out.
Okay. All right. Those appointments next, next week.
Okay.
I'm going with hand signals.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, no, the next item is the Bylaw Review Committee is asking me with town council, but also, I think more generally, is trying to determine how to best, or they have an idea about how to proceed forward, which I think makes sense, but just wanted to run it by you because this is the first time the Bylaw Review Committee in Monterey is really, I mean, we've only had one for less than a couple of years. This is what they want to do, submit the work to town council and meet with town council. And then, and then schedule a meeting with the town to discuss the changes, which I think just means inviting the public. And then, and then present their recommendations to the select board.
And I understood from David that they feel like they've put together a pretty good package. They wanted to make sure they had dotted all their i's, crossed all their t's, and that Donna didn't find any problems before going. They want, I think they do want to talk to us, but I think they're still debating whether to have a public session first and then meet with us, or vice versa. It wasn't clear to me with which way they were, they had decided to proceed.
Do we have any input?
I see value to both approaches. I'm not really sure what the best course is.
Wouldn't they want to be the last?
Yeah.
Uh, either way.
Yeah, why don't, if we're the last to see it, that's probably the least taxing on our board.
Yep.
So we'll go with that, and they'll schedule a meeting with town council. Okay, approved. Review, mail, and correspondence. I don't have any listed approved minutes of of the previous meeting. I just finished editing them, but if we're willing to wait until we're all there in person, I'd appreciate it.
I, that works best. Um, I have one, well, two things. One, do we want, do we want to put on the agenda for next meeting to talk about, do we want to divvy up any, any of the presentation at the special town meeting? So like, each of us can come prepared to talk about a particular issue, so it looks like we're kind of all on one page, or just free for all it. I'm okay with either one, but I'm putting out there if we want to discuss doing that.
I'd say free for all it. It's pretty straightforward, except for the first three articles may have some concern.
Well, I, I, it was the first three articles that were the issue. I mean, the others can be summed up pretty easily by saying we're just dealing with shortfalls to move around items within the budget. That's pretty straightforward.
And the fact that it's three to oh, three and oh on both committees.
But I think there's gonna likely be a lot of questions about, I mean, fuel, I don't think there'll be that many questions, but people will want to know why it happened. And I think for sure, people are gonna want information about Hume.
Well, dress rehearsal has always been the best method.
Right.
So whether we have it, the 18th.
Or, right, or sooner. I just was putting out there, we might want to have that discussion to see if people wanted to take point on particular items. Um, the other thing is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm not opposed to that. I would be happy to do that, but I also feel like we're all comfortable with all of them to some degree, right?
I, I don't have any problem with anybody doing it. I just think if one of us comes in prepared to say, present what the issues are, we can all field questions. It just might make it easier for everyone at the meeting to have a clear picture.
Well, we each take one, two, three, and then the rest is pretty straightforward.
Um, second thing was Ken brought up last night at the joint meeting that we might want to reach out to the Mass Municipal Association to see, well, if nothing else, to see if there were, to spread the word in case folks wanted to submit amicus briefs. I don't have any contacts there, although I did leave a couple of messages at MMA. I, I was reaching in the dark. But I don't think it's a bad idea. I did ask Ken, and, um, he said he's been away too long. He suggested we contact the MMA rep for Western Mass. I'm just, don't know if you guys have any contacts there or any thoughts about how to proceed that way.
I don't.
What is this thing doing? Cause I'm, I'm just...
It would be a way, cause, um, the court is actually calling for amicus briefs on at least two topics. I know one of them is whether Hume is actually covered by the Dover Amendment, and there's, I can't recall what the second issue was. But people need to know that they can file an amicus brief and that there's a case of interest in order to do so. And it would be a way to reach out, because the Dover Amendment, there's a lot of people that have issues with that and with religious organizations in their towns not paying taxes, et cetera. There might be other towns that would file amicus briefs on our behalf.
So if you wanted to draft something, I could send it out to my SAM group. That might be the better, cause that's out to all of the SAM as the small town administrators.
Okay. Um, Don, you have something to say?
Yeah, hi. When a court does what this court has done, it's not because they really want more briefs. They have too many briefs to read as it is. It's a kind of political thing where they're letting the community know that if they want to be heard, they can file briefs. It's, it, it's not going to change the case one iota, and I don't think it's worth your energy and time in trying to get others to submit an amicus brief.
Don, can you just enlighten the rest of us? What, what would the verbiage be of an amicus brief regarding Hume, just on a general topic base?
I'm, I'm sorry, Sid.
What would, what would be included in an amicus brief regarding the Hume lawsuit?
Well, I, I think what's going on frankly is that the church organizations beyond people who are actually putting up a church have been pushing and pushing in too many communities. And I think what the court is interested in doing is narrowing the interpretation of, of, of the, of the statute so that it's, it doesn't allow for things like camps. I mean, my prediction, they're gonna hold that Hume is not entitled at all, and therefore that we can enforce our, our on trailers.
Okay, thank you. Interesting. So yes.
I don't know how to proceed that way. Um, I don't think it's bad for you to reach out that way. I would just want to look some kind of text the way you want it to be. Otherwise, I mean, Ken can reach out to the MMA as well.
He said he doesn't really have a rep there, but I'm happy to...
So we don't really have a rep either.
Right, I'm happy to, is there a rep for Western Mass? I didn't see it divided by areas. But I did leave a couple of messages, um, and hopefully I'll get a call back and see if anybody there can give some guidance as to whether this is something they would do or spread the word to their members or what have you. And maybe we don't need to, but I kind of feel like it wouldn't hurt to let other towns, because it's probably not just small towns either, right? Maybe it mostly is if it's camps, but... Thoughts, Justin? No? Okay. Um, all right.
No, I mean, I think we asked Donna to proceed with the oral argument, and so we're gonna have to explain to the special town meeting that, you know, we could withdraw, but then we're kind of giving up on protecting our zoning bylaws, and that's a slippery slope. Or we could fight it, and it costs a lot of money, but... And the other thing that we still haven't shut the door on is seeking a settlement. But...
Does it, does it make sense to have the chair of the ZBA there to speak regarding the, the potential problems that might arise if we were to quit this suit versus the, versus going forward with it so that people can understand what's really at stake, rather than just, you know, trailers in a field that really are out of most Montereyans' sight? You know, a lot of people are like, "Well, what do they care if they have a trailer here and there?" But the, the problem is, is not the trailer, it's the principle. So if people had somebody like John's insight as to the way the ZBA actually works and what, what entails, and what's at stake, then perhaps that might help influence people's minds in regardless of whichever way they become influenced, but at least to better understand the issues that are at stake here. I mean, I, I would feel pretty comfortable if Mr. Levine would volunteer to speak towards that particular subject on behalf of the zoning board and the select board and the entire town, because what happens in one section of Monterey will eventually affect everybody in Monterey to some degree at some point down the road if we start allowing things or not fighting for what our zoning had been initiated for in the first place. You know, you gotta stand for something or you fall for anything, which is the old saying, so. I like the idea of fighting it. You gotta fight the fight, and if you lose, that's one thing, but if you win, then, then we've justified our cause and, and we're good. And it also solidifies our bylaw.
Yeah.
Because then it becomes case law, so that we can read about that. That's just my input on it. Other than that...
I, I did just reach out to John, um, I'm, he's, I'm sure immediately in response to ask if he'll be in town for the town meeting, but it would be great if he were, because he is very good at clarifying those topics and making it really clear why it, something is, is not advised, so.
In terms of everybody's understanding.
Exactly. That, that was, were all my issues.
Can I suggest, Bernard, keep in mind, I'm not sure if this is true in Massachusetts, but I know in, in most states, if we settled, there would no longer be a controversy, and the, and the court couldn't decide the case at all. Therefore, other communities that are feeling what they consider to be undue pressure from similar institutions like Hume might be interested in providing financial support to us. So that one thing you might want to say at the town meeting is that our select board would see if we can raise additional money from other towns who are interested in this issue to pay, I'll pay your council fees. Thanks.
Well, that's an interesting concept.
I know. How you, how would we identify towns that might be willing to help, Don? I have no clue how to go about doing that.
That I don't know.
Oh, come on. You can't bait us like that. While you're sitting on your comfy couch, maybe that's something you could look into.
I don't, I, I've got to, I think maybe by, by, um, I don't know who to speak to. I have a feeling there's something going on in the state. This, this, what the Supreme Court has done is really extraordinary to add this issue, not even argued by us. So I think other towns was aware, but isn't there some method by which you can, you can address all the towns through the state? Send like an email to all select boards?
I don't know it, man. A lot of blank faces. I could do the small towns, but that's it, and I, all the...
Well, how about we, how about we ask the question around, let's contact Smitty, because he would know how to get a haul of the blast.
Yeah.
So I think he's our ace in the hole to at least notify us as to how to get an email blast out to other towns that may be going under the same problems that we're facing. And let them know what, what's at stake here, and, you know.
The timeline's tight, because the case is on the docket for Feb. 6th, right? So it's about a month, that's all. So who would reach out to Smitty?
Our town administrator would. I mean, I think that's his proper role.
Sure, if you just give me a little context of what I'm looking for, but then...
I think we're looking to, um...
Find the other towns that are under, um...
A way to reach out to other towns that might have an active interest in the case, in the outcome of the case.
Maybe currently actively in a suit.
Concerning the property use of a religious organization.
What is that actually called?
The Dover Amendment?
Dover Amendment.
The Dover Amendment gives them exemption. I don't know if it only gives them exemption from taxes. It gives them exemption from a bunch of stuff.
Yeah. Well, I think that's just a term that could be put in there to help guide people towards the right solution.
It's a key word.
Yeah. Thank you. TA.
Anything else, Justin?
Uh, comments and questions from the public?
There is no public.
There's only Don and us.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, he's...
I'm public.
I said, I guess he's public.
We said just senior Don.
Motion to adjourn, is that what you said?
Vote on adjourning, yes, Justin?
Yes.
Sure, aye.
Meeting adjourned at 1:30 PM. Meeting adjourned at one-thirty PM.
I'll leave the warrants in here, Justin, free to sign if you can do it before I leave.
Yeah, I'll try and, yeah, I'll be right down.
Nice hairdo, buddy.
Thank you.